Good evening. Our special recognitions and presentation meeting is called to order. We'll have a moment of silence, please. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Proceed.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City manager, we have special recognitions and presentations.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. Item 4A is a presentation by the Neighborhood Services Department Director, recognizing the CDBG and Home Grant Programs during National Community Development Week, which will be followed immediately by a proclamation presented to the Neighborhood Services Department.
I'm excited.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. This is a great opportunity to recognize the CDBG and Home Program. It coincides with our 6:30 CDBG funding recommendations, so I thought this would be a good opportunity to highlight National Community Development Week and provide you and the citizens with some information. So why do we want to celebrate CDBG? It's an amazing program. It does a lot in our community. It's a chance to show off the impacts that it provides, and we want to rally our elected officials, staff, and our regional partners in this opportunity. For the last 50 years, we celebrate 50 years in the CDBG program in 2024. So who benefits from the CDBG program? Low and moderate income people are the direct beneficiaries of this program. State and entitlement cities also receive direct program allocations, and those allocations are passed down to our nonprofit organizations, contractors, and other local partners who help us as subrecipients to deliver activities within the city. Local governments work with local program partners and receive input from the public to develop the programs that invest in our people and our neighborhoods. This is some information on the impact of the CDBG program nationwide. It was developed in 1974, and over the course, it'll show you there the growth in the program. There was, in 1974, there was 595 cities that participated, and more up to 1,245 in 2024. Those numbers there at the bottom are nationwide numbers, the number of households that have been assisted, individuals by public services, and individuals that have benefited from public improvements. Also, the Home Program is celebrated during National Community Development Week. This program was authorized in 1990, and it supports, creates affordable housing for low-income households. The funds are generated annually from formula grants. We get our funds through Beavard County. We are not a direct recipient of the Home Funds. Home Funds can be used to support rental and home ownership activities through new construction, rehabilitation, and down payment assistance. Just like CDBG, the Home Program has not been adjusted for inflation over the last 50 years. Since 1992, the Home Program has built or rehabilitated nearly 1.4 million affordable homes nationwide. There continues to be a pressing need in the current economy for CDBG and Home. Between 2005 and 2024, CDBG has facilitated the creation and retention of over 581,000 jobs nationwide. From 2005 to 2025, CDBG has met the housing needs of nearly $2.1 million households nationwide. During that same timeframe, infrastructure improvements have benefited 59 million people Excuse me. Through public services, over 204 million people have been assisted through the CDBG So with the CDBG program, the city at the local level, we collaborate with our nonprofit agencies, utilizing 15% of the grant. We also partner with developers and internal departments to create affordable housing and improve our infrastructure, utilizing 65% of the grant. So our local-level accomplishments between 2015 and 2024, to kind of give you a snapshot of CDBG, we have served over 16,000 people, utilizing just over $203,000 for public services. 15,000 people have benefited from public improvements, utilizing just under $1 million, and 29 households have been served with housing improvements, utilizing just under $1 million. So the all-important proclamation, why we want to celebrate without councils, what would the low-hanging fruit be, is what we call it. It elevates visibility and demonstrates support for the CDBG and Home Program. And reading the council meeting posted on city channels also gives the public an opportunity to participate in this recognition. So to wrap it up, what works and why? Storytelling. We like to tell stories about the improvements that have been done throughout our community. Teamwork, as they say, is the dream work without our nonprofits, developers, and contractors. And then we, local support with community meetings, we hold community meetings. And then we want to celebrate all wins, whether they're big or small, as our community deserves. That wraps up the presentation for National Community Development Week.
I have a couple of questions. One is, does this money come from HUD?
Yes, this money comes directly from HUD.
Do we have any indication that some of these funds may be cut with the current administration?
I have asked. As you can imagine, we keep hearing, you know, about the cuts and freezing programs. Right now, HUD has not been directed to freeze or cut the CDBG or Home Program. They have been told it will be level funding, but that doesn't mean that there won't be some last-minute changes.
Understand. Thank you. Any questions from the council?
Yeah.
Yes, sorry. Please.
Terry, remind us how much we put into Community of Hope, the low-income housing project?
Well, with Community of Hope, that was a two-phase project. The first phase, we utilized our Home Grant, the CHODO funds, and regular housing funds. Don't hold me to it, but I want to say it was around $300,000 in the first round. And then the second phase, we utilized the ARPA grant, which is close to $1 million in that project with the ARPA.
And how many low-income housing units did that give us?
It gives us nine units.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? No questions. We're ready for the proclamation.
The official proclamation of the city of Titusville, Florida. Whereas 2024 marked the 50th anniversary of the Community Development Block Grant Program, and whereas the week of April 21 through 25, 2025, has been designated as National Community Development Week to recognize and celebrate the Community Development Block Grant Program and the Home Investment Partnership Program. And whereas since 1975, the CDBG program has provided annual funding and flexibility to local communities to provide affordable housing, a suitable living environment, and economic opportunities, and whereas since 1992, the Home Program has created and preserved affordable housing for low-income families, and whereas over the past five years, the city has received over $1,284,000 in CDBG funds and $668,000 in Home Funds, and whereas both programs have suffered funding cuts over the years, and whereas we urge Congress and the administration to recognize the outstanding work being done locally with CDBG and Home Funds by providing increased funding to both programs in FY 2025. And now therefore, I, Andrew Connors, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Titusville, Florida, do hereby proclaim April 21 through 25 as National Community Development Week in the city of Titusville, and I encourage all residents to support these two valuable programs that have made tremendous contributions to the viability of the housing stock, infrastructure, public services, and economic vitality of our community. Signed, Andrew Connors, Mayor.
Okay. Would you like to come up?
Yes, I'd like to invite all of Neighborhood Services up here.
We call this room. Where are we right now?
There's going to be executives on the left. Okay. We'll get you on this side, then.
On this side.
Get this up there.
On this side.
You're good. Ready? One, two, three. All right.
Thank you. So very much. What's your deal? Okay. What's your deal? One, two, three. Good job.
Great. Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the State Housing Initiative and Partnership Grantship. You just, no rest for the weary, right?
We have a presentation. We have a presentation for you tonight that, as a precursor to your 6:30 meeting, we have on the 6:30 meeting our SHIP Local Housing Assistance Plan. It's a three-year plan, and this presentation will give us some information about the SHIP program and what it's all about. So just to give you some background on the SHIP program, in 1992, the Sodowsky Act was passed, which enacted the SHIP Trust Fund. The Trust Fund SHIP program is supported by housing advocates, the building industry, and realtors. It allows local governments to design programs for homeowners and affordable housing developers. Funds are allocated based on the population size of each city. SHIP is governed by the Florida Statute 420.907 and the Florida Administrative Code 67-37. The primary objective of the SHIP program is to assist low- and moderate-income persons by providing forms of housing assistance. It also, we use our SHIP grant to provide the match for the Home Grant. The Home Grant requires a 15% match, or 25% match, I'm sorry. It also furthers the housing element of the local government comprehensive plan specific to affordable housing. So here's kind of a list of the rules that Neighborhood Services follows when designing an L-HAP and implementing our programs. So with SHIP, at least 65% of those funds must be reserved for home ownership activities. 75% must be reserved for construction activities, and those are usually combined. When you do build new housing or you rehab housing, they meet both of those conditions. At least 30% of the funds must serve very low, 30% must serve low, and 20% must serve persons with special needs. There is a maximum 25% of the funds that can be used for rental housing, and 20% for manufactured housing, and the maximum 10% for administrative functions. Also, all properties that are assisted with the SHIP grant must not exceed 90% of the average area purchase price set by the program. So special needs housing, we just mentioned that. SHIP statue found here explains how each eligible municipality must create a strategy within their plan to serve those special housing needs. The SHIP program is the purpose of meeting the housing needs of the very low, low, and moderate-income households to expand production of or preserve affordable housing. That's to further the housing element of the local government comprehensive plan. So what is the housing element? We look at in the plan is what is the housing stock we have in Titusville? What is the age and the condition of that stock? And then what is the demand? What is today's housing demand? What is the projected demand in coming years? Also, in the L-HAP, we have to, under the SHIP statue, incorporate green and innovative designs that make housing, to reduce housing costs related to maintenance and utilities or insurance. Those things can be considered, such as programmable thermostats, deckwork improvements, insulation, HVAC maintenance, which is your heating and air conditioning, ventilation upgrades, window upgrades, and others. Administrative functions for the Neighborhood Services Department. Obviously, we have the day-to-day administrative operations. We also manage contracts. We track expenditures to ensure compliance. We monitor the program's progress. We prepare reports to the state. We prepare the L-HAP every three years, and then every year, we are required to submit an annual report to the state. So developing programs in the L-HAP, we identify programs. What are other communities doing? We inquire with Florida Housing Coalition, and we use historical data, and we also strive to meet community needs. We evaluate those programs throughout their three-year cycle to evaluate the program's criteria, technical feasibility, economic feasibility, and what's worked and what hasn't. Then we go move into the implementing stage of these activities, and so we select and implement the strategies. We utilize our Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, staff, and then public input to determine how to implement the programs. We monitor the outcomes. We use ongoing tracking. We develop a plan every three years, and we prepare our annual reports, which is a time of reflection on how the program has worked each year. This is just a snapshot of the calendar of the SHIP program that kind of outlines throughout the year what each cycle looks like. In March, we're meeting with our Affordable Housing Committee. April, we're doing our reconciliations with the Finance Department. In May, we're preparing to submit our new L-HAP, which we will have later at the 6:30 meeting. In June, we're making sure that we're meeting our expenditure and encumbrance deadlines. And July begins the new year with SHIP, so we're advertising the availability of funds to begin our next cycle of applications and our annual report. August, we have the public review for the annual, and then the annual report is due September 15, and then December 31, the AHOC report is due from that committee. I believe that wraps that up. If anybody has any questions.
My first question is, I noticed you said low and very low income. How do we differentiate? What's the dividing line on that?
So each year, HUD puts out a chart that breaks down those definitions, and it's based upon the number of people in the household. So a household of one would have a different definition than a household of four. But very low is the household makes no more than 60% of the average income, and low is 80%.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Franklin. I just have a question. I don't know if you have the data on this right now, or if you could email it to us, but you had some of the questions in the presentation. What is the housing stock? What is today's housing demand? I'd be curious to have that information, if you wouldn't mind emailing it. Thank you.
It's not lighting up, so I have to look. Go. Terry, how much do, did we get this year?
Um, excuse me, I've got a really... For SHIP, the year starts in July, and this year's allocation was, I believe, is 387,141 or somewhere around there.
How much of that goes to rehabilitation of houses, approximately?
Probably 50% of that.
Okay.
Supports that program.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Thank you, Terry. Good report. Okay. Status update on the economic development projects?
Nicholas Gower, Economic Development Coordinator, will provide a brief update on the current projects being completed in Economic Development Department.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
Bear with me here, I'm just getting my voice back, so I'll be having some water here while we do this.
You're a young man, you shouldn't have a problem with that.
You know, pollen doesn't discriminate, so. So I appreciate the opportunity to present this evening's updates on the initiatives that are underway in the Economic Development Department. Tonight, I'm going to walk you through the key projects that we are currently executing. Each of them are designed to enhance the economic vitality of Titusville and position our community for sustainable growth. So currently, managing a robust portfolio of strategic projects that are directly tied to our short-term and long-term economic objectives. These initiatives include administering a brownfield grant to encourage redevelopment as well as to address blight, updating the Economic Development Strategic Plan, developing a refreshed marketing, communications, public relations strategy, rebuilding our economic development website, and then launching Resimplify, which is a commercial real estate platform designed to improve property visibility and investment activity. Each of these projects aligns with our core mission, to create an environment where business can thrive, new opportunities emerge, and Titusville remains competitive in a rapidly-evolving economic landscape. So the first project, the Brownfield Grant. So the city of Titusville was awarded a $300,000 EPA Brownfield Grant. I'm happy to report substantial progress in that. The grant is being used to combat blight, assess redevelopment potential, prepare sites for environmental cleanup and reuse. To date, we've completed 22 Phase 1 environmental studies, five natural resource assessments, which do include wetland endangered species as well as tree surveys. We've done three Phase 2 investigations, and currently, we have two Phase 1 assessments that are underway. This work lays the groundwork for future development while ensuring that we're preserving our natural assets, and then responsibly managing risk. The next project is the Economic Development Strategic Plan. So what you see here on this slide is the scope of work that was to be covered while we do the update. Currently, we are finalizing the SWOT analysis report. I'm waiting to get the land use capacity analysis back, and then we're going to start moving into the strategies and recommendations. So the goal is completing the strategy here for fiscal year '24, and then starting to move into implementation in fiscal year '25. Part of the process was to include stakeholder workshops to ensure that the plan reflects both the community priorities as well as market opportunities. In order to do so, we had a series of stakeholder meetings, three separate meetings to engage all of the public, the private sectors, all of the individuals that are here in the community to make sure that they had a platform to be able to share their input. The meetings were very well-attended, high attendance, and the information that we got back on it was invaluable. The next project is the Marketing Communications and Public Relations Strategy. To elevate our brand and improve how we tell Titusville's story, we're developing a comprehensive marketing, communications, and public relations strategy. This initiative focuses on strategic messaging, branding, social media, marketing collateral, web presence, specifically targeting three key segments, and that is tourism, resident attraction, and business investment. Our goal is to position Titusville as a prime destination for opportunity, leveraging our assets to enhance the tax base and increase economic prosperity for all. And lastly, Resimplify. So Resimplify is a dynamic... So Resimplify is a dynamic real estate platform. Um, we're launching it in partnership with the North Brevard Economic Development Zone. Uh, for a modest shared investment of three thousand dollars, we will be deploying a live online map that showcases all commercial and industrial properties available in North Brevard and Titusville. This is a game changer. It does improve transparency. It strengthens our competitive edge and it helps reduce blight by promoting occupancy and investment opportunities. We're targeting a June first deployment. We're already seeing interest from developers, uh, that are eager for this level of access and clarity. Additionally, um, at any given point, I, I do work with the International Economic Development Council. I am a member there. Um, I am on the Board of Directors of the Titusville Area Chamber of Commerce, um, as well as the Board for the Space Coast E D C, uh, attend the board meetings for the, uh, Space Coast Regional Airport Board of Directors, um, also the meetings for the North Brevard Economic Development Zone, um, the Florida E D C, and also I am on the Committee for the Bicycle Pedestrian Trails Advisory Committee at the Space Coast T P O. So if at any point in time you need assistance in facilitating communications with anybody in those organizations, I'd be happy to assist, also to be able to provide liaison reports as needed. So closing, these projects represent a proactive, uh, forward-thinking approach to economic development. Titusville is not only investing in infrastructure and planning, we're investing in the future. Um, I'm proud of the momentum that we have built and I look forward to continuing this work with your support. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from council? Members Stokel?
Okay, are you seeing my number over there?
No.
Okay.
It's not.
All right, I'll raise, I'll raise my hand. I'll raise my hand, okay.
Yeah.
All right, uh, thank you, Nicholas, uh, for that. Uh, this is probably one of my, I shouldn't say that, one of my favorite departments, but, um, it's important. It's, it's one of the reasons I like being on council. So, um, a couple of comments. One, I appreciate you sharing about the grant. I'm excited about that. I think that we are prime space for blight cleanup and redevelopment. Two, drafting the new strategic plan, um, that's what I do in my full-time job. So I get that we're always continuously working on what we can do, doing a SWOT analysis. Can you speak to some of the current strategies or past strategies that we have had and kind of what that has looked like a little bit?
So I think, uh, the reason why we revisited the strategies the last time that it was completed was twenty fourteen. Um, so obviously when it was originally designed, it was a little bit of a different economic environment here. Um, a lot of what was on there had already been eliminated and implemented.
Okay.
Um, and I think that the, the strategies moving forward are just more reflective of, uh, what we have going on with our commercial growth and everything else that's in the area. I, I do have a draft of the SWOT that has been completed by the, uh, Regional Planning Council.
Okay.
I'd be happy to.
I would definitely like to see that.
Yeah.
And then, so if I'm hearing you correctly, did you inherit the current plan?
I did.
That's what I thought, okay. So thank you for sharing that. Um, moving forward, do you anticipate that this new plan will be a ten-year plan or are you looking at more of a five-year plan? Or have you thought through that part yet? And it's okay if you have.
No, good question. I haven't. My thought would be that the, the rate of change probably needs to be more for a five-year, but, um, I haven't put consideration on that.
Okay, yeah, I feel like ten, I, and I've seen it in the educational side. It's anywhere from between three and ten years.
Right.
We've had a three-year one. I feel like that's way too quick, in my opinion. We're looking to do a five-year one and I think ten-year, just with how quickly things change, even you having to inherit one, you know, it would have been nice to maybe not have had to do that. So, um, okay, that one. Um, the marketing, I appreciate, and some of us were on council when we approved that. So it's nice to see some of that. One thing I did notice with that component, it looks like there's, that you said the three buckets, the tourism, the resident, and business. Um, from an economic standpoint, I feel like it would probably be more advantageous to focus primarily on the business because that's what we're trying to do is create careers for our residents and maybe, I don't know, maybe that's a different department that would focus on the tourism aspect or the residence. I don't know if that makes sense. That's kind of what I think, um, thinking through it. It's like, for me, I feel like we have a lot of people moving here. We already have approved a lot of residential units. Um, I, what I would like to see is jobs for these people, careers, um, to see how we can better, and I think that touches on the other component with what you guys are doing with the software, focusing on the commercial spaces in the industry, industrial spaces to really, if we had to pick an area, that's where I would like to see us focus more so on.
And, and I think the, the, the feedback I've also received from the site selectors that I've spoke with, um, you know, they'll rule a lot of communities out that don't have these things in place in the first place.
Okay.
So because we didn't have them, um, you know, a lot of them have just looked elsewhere. So it's been working to kind of get those things in place and working side-by-side with them and what it is. Uh, as far as the tourism side of things, it's more about, um, you know, employers are looking at communities also that have that quality of life. So showcasing our natural assets and what it is that we do have, um, kind of goes hand in hand with attracting, um, the talent and the.
Okay, that, and I understand that aspect of that, that, thank you for clarifying. And then the last piece, um, which, uh, if we're partnering with Nbeds on, uh, that software, I would just hope that depending on what happens with Nbeds, that we are able to fund that software if it's, uh, beneficial for us as a city.
So the whole cost of the software is six thousand dollars currently for the year. We have a M O U with them, um, to share the cost. We do currently have it as a one-year trial.
Okay.
Um, so we'll revisit at the end of having the software in place for the first year, um, if at that point then, um, I could come back to council and ask for, um, advisability moving forward.
Okay, great, thank you.
Is the software live now or?
So the software is not live yet. Uh, deployment date that we're aiming for is June first. Um, we have provided Resimplify with all of the files that they need to be able to start collecting all that data. Um, so right now we're on track with the June first deployment date.
And it will be accessible through our website?
Yes, sir.
Great. Any other questions from council?
Yes.
Members Stokel?
Thank you. Um, so with the website, I know that it's, it's meant to push people towards redevelopment for commercial and industrial spaces. Um, how do you think that will play a part with Live Local? Like, uh, Member Stokel said, uh, we've, we've approved a lot of residential, but we want to attract jobs and so it, it could be used, I mean, in that sense as well as people, developers come in and say, oh, this is what we can actually, uh, rezone and, you know.
Sure.
Have you had any, any investors look at it that way?
I, I can try and answer that one. That information's available on our website already with the interactive zoning map that we have that shows which properties have industrial or commercial zoning.
Thank you very much, Nicholas. And we'll move on to our annual update on the Sustainability Action Plan. And as you come up here, I want to commend you on a wonderful luncheon today. Everything about it was good, including the food. Thank you so much. It was very professionally done.
Thank you. I, I actually didn't have any because I was so nervous.
You didn't seem like you were, okay?
Good, because I'm going to stand, I've got the nerves, but I'll go ahead and get started. This is a beefy, your presentation. I'll go ahead and just start. Um, good evening, my name is Lily Galio and I serve as the Sustainability Program Coordinator for the City of Titusville. Uh, twenty twenty-five does mark the second annual report for the Sustainability Action Plan since it was adopted in twenty twenty-three. Um, if the text is too small, the presentation starts on forty-seven of your packet. So, yes, twenty twenty-five marks the second annual report since the Sustainability Plan was adopted and since then it's also been added to the city's performance measures for twenty twenty-four. Uh, and since then, we also have made some considerable work updating the Sustainability section of the website. The link is also in that presentation slide. I wanted to do a quick roll-through of the implementation matrix. The first, uh, full version can be found on one thirteen of your packet. The plan is broken up into six focus areas with twenty-eight objectives, twenty-three targets, and eighty-seven total action items. You can see the co-benefits section on the far right indicates that no one action stands alone. And in fact, each action serves to benefit at least one or more other focus areas. It's very systemically connected in that way. There's also an estimated timeframe element to this implementation matrix that allows the matrix to operate as a living document, getting updated on a schedule as we learn new information and move forward. The first deadline for that is twenty twenty-eight. So with that, let's jump right in. This is the summary of the first focus area, Community and Livability. And I don't expect you to read all of these. I just wanted to demonstrate the act, how the actions serve their respective objectives, ultimately leading to accomplish the goal defined with it, within each focus area. In summary, this focus area seeks to empower citizens through improved sense of community, inclusivity, equity, and quality of life. With that, we're looking to do things like increase access to healthy food, promote active lifestyles, and increase citizen participation within sustainability. A few of the highlights of twenty twenty-four. We began with benchmarking what it means to have access to healthy foods by mapping out the local supermarkets as defined by the USDA. One of the twenty-three target metrics in the S A P seeks to increase this access to healthy food within a half mile of residents. We're currently looking at a thirteen point three-five percent of the city falls within that target. In addition, twenty-nine dinners, the twenty-nine dinners image up there, shows a picture of the Harry T Moore Center's Community Kitchen, which is used, uh, to run on sponsors like from churches and five oh one three Cs. They later received funding, or grant funding, and last year served over twenty-nine dinners with an average attendance of twenty to fifty people. Their goal is to bring the community together through activities like community meals and other events. Additionally, the city worked to promote other positive activities with members of the community, including the annual bike ride and star party. The link at the bottom of this page also allows for citizens to directly sign up for community development newsletters. That's the department me and Nick are in. And lastly, the year, this year was our first ever year hosting the Sustainability Awards, where anyone could nominate a sustainability leader in our community. And as a result, we not only got to recognize a lot of sustainability leaders, but also increased citizen participation. The graph you see at the bottom is tracking user data on the city's sustainability webpages. And right around March of this year, when the nomination awards went live, you see a spike in the number of uses that breached over a hundred in a day for the first time in over a year. So take that as a win. In fact, we put out posters for this, thank you. In fact, we put out posters for this nomination for anyone to scan. And when I checked the metrics on that, um, from February to April, it made up about fourteen percent of all users on this page. So they were getting scanned out there in the ether. So Focus Area Two is largely targeting the natural resources element of the S A P. It focuses on prioritizing our green infrastructure, our low-impact development. And a quick definition of that, it's our lowest, it's our stormwater management practice, designed to capture rainwater where it falls, reducing runoff and pollutant loading into the lagoon. It also includes action items that address urban forestry and the city's resiliency efforts to address coastal vulnerabilities like flooding, storm surge, and sea level rise. This says a lot. With that, we're working to update the city's flood maps. We've updated the resilient Titusville webpage to reflect that, the complete timeline of all past projects, that's that timeline that you see, and also to demonstrate where we are now and where we're heading in the future. Their citizens can use, also, uh, use our Identify a Flood, which allows people in the city to drop a pin on a map, upload a picture, and demonstrate where ongoing flooding patterns occur. The efforts are made possible thanks to our G I S team, which helped us capture over thirty-three entries so far. For developers, the city adopted a low-impact development incentive matrix. So in exchange for using low-impact development practices, they can get incentives like flexible parking or expedited site reviews. Since then, in this last year, um, you can see culvers up there at the top, which is showing a, uh, low-impact development practice of permeable pavement. And in twenty twenty-four, we saw about thirty-two percent of all site, site permits issued were using L I D development techniques in their site. We're hoping to see that actually increase in twenty twenty-five. In green infrastructure category, the folks in the Public Works Department have completed four of the twenty tree boxes, complete with biofiltration media and engineered perforating piping networks, designed to absorb the initial rush of stormwater discharge to enhance pollution removal and hydraulic performance of our stormwater infrastructure. These also add to our urban tree canopy, which has now begun fully executed and by contract agreement and soon to enter the bid stages. Focus Area Three is our biggest with two different goals, targeting both energy demand reduction, transitioning to renewable cleaner energy sources, and as well as achieving seventy-five percent landfill diversion rates, reducing our overall consumption by reusing materials. Excuse me, also recovering from a cold. In an effort to track our electric vehicle readiness, below is a heat map that you see there demonstrating pockets of the city were, uh, without charger, with and without chargers, charging stations. This marks the beginning of benchmarking efforts, but in the meantime, the Public Works Fleet has also added nineteen new hybrids while phasing out their old, older, less efficient fuel-powered vehicles. Within the scope of energy reduction and efficiency, we've also been working to execute a D O E ASHRAE Level Two Energy Audit on our municipal buildings as we seek to achieve net-zero greenhouse gases by twenty fifty. I've been closely following and partnering with the Energy Policy Coordinator at the City of Orlando's Office of Sustainability Greenworks Group, very robust. In order to track our waste diversion efforts, you'll see the chart up there. That's the city's solid waste in tons, which is weighed from the transfer station as it enters the landfill. The yellow residential waste has seen a drop by about fourteen percent since, from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four, while commercial waste and recycling have increased by point seven and point eight respectively. Water. This category is largely focused on upgrading and replacing the water lines while reducing overall demand through higher efficiency water fixtures and reuse. It also asks to develop a plan and protocols for future water quality threats and water hazard mitigation. With that, sorry, the city has studied and received a developed methodology for tests for pollution sources, including a decision tree for how to investigate for specific sources and conduct proper sampling. With that, a lot of the work that's been targeting inflow and intrusion, water main upgrades, and force main upgrades. The Smart Growth Focus Group seeks to accomplish a number of action items, including housing affordability for all price points, providing safe pedestrian bicycle pathways, and promoting complete neighborhoods, which is an urban planning concept that refers to residential areas where people can have access to all the essentials where they live, work, and play. And with that, four point two miles of sidewalks have gone alongside collector roadways, providing a sa, uh, safe way for bikers and pedestrians to be mobile. There's also a target metric, six point four, which seeks to demonstrate equitable distribution of housing types and price points. Since the last U.S. Census, the largest household income bucket was about seventy-five thousand dollars a household, the average household income, which made up over fifteen percent of the population using a basic online mortgage calculator for affordable housing. Uh, this, the above chart in the same color is what would be considered affordable for them. That falls within the range of about two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand. But you'll also notice that well over fifteen percent of the home values assessed in twenty twenty-three were above four hundred percent. So working, things like the Cannaveral Heights plans that look to, look for housing alternatives and seek to build the missing metal includes homes like duplexes and quadruplexes and anything that aren't the massive multifamily or single detached residential homes. And lastly, our Sustainable Economy Focus Area seeks to promote a circular economy, promote equitable, equitable employment and training opportunities, as well as other sustainable green best prac, green businesses, business practices, excuse me. With that, we partnered with Career Source Brevard, who also offers training and skill building to host the city's internship program. This year, the city's Economic Development Plan is getting updated. And I've reached out to the East Florida Regional Planning Council, who's helping to draft that plan to see if there's any alignment with the S A P as well as the Economic Development Plan. I think it's also important to note that sixty-four percent of the sustainability nominees were businesses, demonstrating their key role in executing sustainable initiatives within our community. And now after I just dumped all that information, here's a quick summary of everything that I went over. Now that we're in year two, forty-four percent of all action items have been start, have begun or started. The two charts at the bottom are demonstrating essentially the same statistic, uh, in different ways, one by the anticipated timeline and the other by the focus area. Most of the action items that you'll see come started are in the ecosystems and resiliency as well as the water category, thanks to our Public Works and Water Departments. But it's also important to note that a few of these actions are timed or labeled as ongoing, which means they don't have an end. Final element of the S A P I wanted to call attention to are the twenty-three target measures, which before this time have basically been listed as that, just, uh, a single metric there. But some of these targets can be measured, uh, straightforwardly, while others can be harder to define. And so you'll see, I don't click it too fast. And so you'll see, I don't click it too fast. Things like in the sustainable economy and smart growth, it's a little bit harder to measure, so I hope that the next time I come before you, I'll have at least some or more or all of them defined. Okay, that's it. Any questions?
Well, I have a couple of comments, and one is the sustainability awards that we're giving out, given out today. It really was, it was a way to bring about awareness. And all of the businesses that received it, the things that they did were not things they had to do, they did them because they were aware. And as I stated earlier at the lunch, I remember the first Earth Day, I was in graduate school. It was April the 21st, 1970, which was 55 years ago. And I saw this group of people standing over there, and I'm like, what are these hippies doing? And look what has, it has evolved to. I mean, it's tremendous what it has come to. And that was a really good presentation, and when you started off, you were nervous, but once you got comfortable, you got going. Thank you.
That's practice.
Any other questions from council?
Only one comment.
You can go first.
Okay.
Lily, I think we sold our first EV to Brad.
Brad bought an EV?
Wait, what?
I think you got him, I think we have him sold.
Oh, I hope so. If we're ready.
Yeah, Members Tocque.
Yes, great presentation. Again, I think this plan you inherited, correct?
Yes.
So, okay, and I appreciate how you outlined this and laid it out for us. And then to your point, I think you've kind of mentioned that, and this is probably partially our fault as well, some of these objectives and stuff are not easily measurable. So when you were saying, you know, provide safe and comfortable sidewalks, prioritize safe pedestrian, what does that look like so we can track and measure progress? And so I think as you kind of work toward that and kind of clearly define what that is, even some of the other ones where you gave us and saw even like the website hits, for instance, that's great to look at to see, okay, are we doing our job as far as educating the public, bringing awareness, letting them know about great ideas? I think it's great. I, this is easy to follow, this is not my area of expertise, and you get me really excited about this, Lily, so I appreciate that. I appreciate your passion, and you're not allowed to leave.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Herring, Dan, thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Now, we'll move on to the ordinance for the school zone speed enforcement program.
The Titusville Police Department will provide a presentation regarding the use of school zone speed enforcement cameras, and no action is requested at this meeting. Good evening, council, community. We appreciate the opportunity to sit in front of you all tonight to talk about an initiative that we find important. One of the Titusville Police Departments, we have several objectives. One of our big objectives is child safety. We're so serious about it that we currently have 11 school resource officers assigned at our schools, so every school, public school is covered, as well as a couple of charter school and private schools, and it looks to be increasing. I tell you that because we're one of the only larger agencies municipalities in the county that staffs every single school with an SRO. And it comes at a great cost because that's 11 officers off the street, but that's how serious the chief and the department is about child safety. Which brings me to why I'm here tonight. So in 2023, the legislature and Governor DeSantis signed in a bill, HB 657, that created specifications for a speed detection system in school zones. Prior to that, automated enforcement was not allowed in Florida other than at red light cameras. The City of Titusville, I know we explored that, we never participated in, in red light So what brought us here? As we started exploring what this bill created, we met with crossing guards, met with some parents, other agencies who have already implemented it, the state of Georgia's been doing this for several years. And initially, I was hesitant, I, if I'm being honest, I didn't think we needed it. And I told the vendor that, and I said, I don't think this is going to fit the City of Titusville. So we ordered some speed studies, and the first company that came in did a speed study, and I was shocked, we have a problem with speeding in school zones. But I wasn't quite sold, so another company stepped in, and I had them run a speed study. And then a third company came in, and all they wanted to know was that we would consider them if this ended up being implemented in the city. So we had three separate speed studies done. Most municipalities and counties that have taken part in this didn't, didn't do that. They usually had one, we had three. And I can tell you, the data shows that we have a problem in our school zones. So the question was, what can these speed cameras do for us? So first, let me talk about Florida. Florida ranks second in the United States for most dangerous school zones and third for pedestrian fatalities by population. So Florida's a big problem, a lot of it's tourism. I think most of you know, in the roads today, they're occupied by larger motor vehicles, SUVs, trucks, and what's in these newer vehicles, technology. So what tends to happen? We're all distracted, even me, right? We drive distracted every day, we're driving faster, we live in a fast-paced society, everybody's in a hurry. So what does that lead to? It leads to crashes. And another one of our objectives is to lower our instances of crashes with injuries. So how do you do that? We have to change driver behavior. So Brevard County ranks 11th nationally for pedestrian deaths. A lot of people don't know that. And just to put things into perspective, the City of Titusville has had, should be 134 vehicle versus pedestrian bicyclist crashes since 2020. We just had two more in the last month, two pedestrian deaths. So, you know, it's tough to talk about that because even one pedestrian death to me is just one too many. So talking about speed, I was in here before when we talked about venturing into this program and looking into the program, and I, and I told you guys then how speed kills. And, you know, the fatality rate of someone hit by a car at 20 miles per hour is about 10%. So if you get hit by a motor vehicle at 20 miles per hour or less, you got about a 10% chance of dying, 90%, 90% chance of living. As soon as that speed is increased to 40 miles per hour, it's a flip of a coin, 50% chance that you're not going to go home that day. That's extremely important, and that's why this program is important and why I feel it brings value. So what is a speed detection system? So it's defined, the legal definitions under Florida Statute 36003. A speed detection system is an automated system to detect vehicle speeds, pretty self-explanatory. It uses radar and LiDAR to measure vehicle speeds, and essentially what it does is it takes a picture, the radar and/or LiDAR will designate the motor vehicle that's speeding, it will take a picture and/or a video of that vehicle, and that is the evidence that can be used in court. So how does the program work? So, like I said, we have three separate speed studies done, independent of each other, and you have to show a heightened safety risk in each school zone. Well, what does that mean? Well, essentially, if you look at the data that I provided, one, the first thing I looked at is what is the level of motor vehicle traffic in that area? Because there's a couple of school zones that, that we have that I did not suggest we cover because there's not very much vehicle traffic through there, and I didn't think it made sense. So I think you can look at the data and you will see there's definitely a heightened safety risk in each of those school zones. So the program works by, you install these cameras, and they're automated, and they operate 30 minutes prior to the start of school, through the school day, and 30 minutes after school. Now, the catch is, the 30 minutes prior to school starts, that's an enhanced school zone. So what does that mean? When you see the blinking flashing lights in school zones, what does that mean? Everybody knows what that means, I better hit the brakes, right? I better do the speed limit. So that's all it means. And then during the middle of the school day, while school's in session, it's the normal speed limit, okay? So if it's 35 miles per hour, it goes back to 35 miles per hour. Now, the program says, why I like the program, one of the arguments is it's a, it's a money grab. Well, it gets the worst offenders, so it only issues citations to vehicles traveling over 10 miles per hour over the speed limit. So most school zones are 15 miles an hour, some are 20, but most are 15. So nobody gets a citation until they hit 26 miles per hour, if that makes sense. That's a pretty big leeway, and I think most of us are responsible enough to drive through those areas and not get a citation. So I don't see the money grab argument, I just don't. I think there's enough leeway there to, to accommodate for that. The statute also indicates that you got to have a 30-day grace period, an education period, they're calling it. So prior to the implementation of, the implementation of the program, they have to do a 30-day campaign, whether that's social media, mail flyers out, and it only issues warnings during that time, there are no citations during that time. I think that's important because it also shows the community, hey, look, we want you to know these are here. We're not going to hide them in the trees or, you know, behind bushes. We want it to be as big and bright and as loud as possible because we want you to know where you're going. To put things into perspective, think about the last time you were driving your motor vehicle and you saw a police officer. What did you do? What's the first thing you did? You probably looked down at your speedometer, right? Or you hit your brakes. We all do it, I do it, right? Traffic officers get behind me now, I'm like, why is he behind me? What did I do? So it has that effect. The reason I say that is, that's a change in driver behavior. That's exactly what this program is, is designed to do, change driver behavior, okay? So this program issues civil citations, okay? It's a $100 civil citation. Now, $100, it's not a drop in the bucket, it's a lot of money to me, too, I understand that. However, if there's no real-world jeopardy attached to these things, why do we speed? Because you're trying to get to point A to point B because you're in a hurry, right? But all of a sudden, if I throw a $100 fine in there, you might think twice about it, right? Or why do most of us decide not to speed? It's probably not because we didn't, we think it's wrong, it's because we don't want to get pulled over and get a citation, you know? And, and again, as another example, I'm not immune to it. Just last year, I had to go to the chief because I'm coming back from vacation in North Carolina, coming down the mountain, and I got pulled over, and guess what? I got a citation. So I had to notify him of that. But you know what? When I drive through North Carolina now, guess what? It changed my behavior. That will never happen to me again, if that makes sense. And that's exactly what this program is designed to do. So this is the breakdown of the civil citation, so if you look at, at your printouts there, $60 of that citation goes to the municipality or whoever implements the program. In our case, the City of Titusville. So those funds, it's dictated by statute, we don't get to make this up, the statute directs exactly where the money has to go, that $60 has to be used toward public safety $20 of it goes to the state general fund, $12 of it goes to the local school district, and that money has to be used toward school safety. $3 of it is to the FDLE Training and Standards Commission, and then $5 is to, toward the local school crossing guard program. Now, that's important because trying to recruit and retain our crossing guards is becoming more challenging, and the reason being is, you know, the couple hours during the, you know, the morning and the couple hours during the afternoon, it's pretty much, their whole day is shot based on about four hours of pay. So it's really difficult. Most of the people we recruit are a lot of retirees, and, you know, we, this, this $5 can be used to enhance that program, to help, you know, bonuses or recruit and retain however we decide to use that toward that program. Okay, now this here is basically, this is what happens if we decide to issue a uniform traffic citation, which is what officers issue, what we call tickets, right? So this would be the difference. If we issue the civil citation through the speed camera program, it's $100, okay? And out of that $100, you saw the breakdown of the fees. It's dictated by statute that no points go on your license for those, and your insurance cannot use that against you to increase your insurance rates. Extremely important, so it's simply a $100 fine. Again, not a drop in the bucket. However, if you get one of these in a school zone, you see, so if you're doing 10 to 14 miles an hour, that's a $209 fine, that's double, and you're getting points, there's, it's three points. And then as it goes up, as you can see, if you're doing 30 plus over, it's a $600 fine. So there's a significant difference. That's why my argument against the money grab, if a police officer works a school zone, they can pull you over for doing one mile over the speed limit. I don't know, most people don't know that, and you can be issued a citation for that. In the speed camera program, you're not going to get a citation until you hit 11 over, if that makes sense. So next, what are the steps that we'd have to take? So obviously, you'd have to choose a vendor. There are several vendors out there, there's a, there's a specific vendor that, you know, that I've kind of been along the way, that's worked very well with the city. You know, they install all of the equipment. The important part about this program is it costs nothing for the City of Titusville. It is completely violator-funded. So what do I mean by that is, the program is paid through offenders. If the City of Titusville and our great community here decides that they're going to abide by the speed limit and not, we don't get any offenders, that, that would be great. It still costs the City of Titusville nothing. So these cameras are expensive. You know, I think they said it costs, you could, they'll charge $7,000 per school zone because they put two cameras in. But it's at their cost and not our cost. So again, it's cost us zero, even if we, you know, issue zero citations, it costs us nothing. The vendor would obviously do the site selection, and that's through the, the speed studies that we did, we, we found the areas that we believe have the heightened safety risk. And then the important part, I, I know, Member Moscoso, we monitored social media too, right? And I saw your interview the other day because I was thinking, I'm dead in the water. But to answer your question, you, you, you mentioned that you had concerns about it being a third-party vendor. I do too, right? But here's what's important about it. They only do the administrative functions, all of the decisions rest with the police department. So essentially, if they, if, let's just say I have a violation, it gets sent through the vendor, the vendor reviews it and sends it to us. We have the final say on that. So if we look, and it, I will tell you this, if it's even close, we're, we're going to benefit the driver, we're going to give the benefit of the doubt to the driver if it's even close. It's just not worth it to me because what we're looking for is change in driver behavior. I could care less about the $100. We want to change driver behavior. But the only way to do that is to have some type of real-world jeopardy, and that's where this $100 comes into play. So the program benefits, obviously the enhanced safety, so studies have shown, you know, with these speed cameras and even the red light programs, believe it or not, that it has lowered instances of deaths and crashes. So the lower the speed, the safer you are, it's that simple. It's cost neutral for the City of Titusville, it costs us nothing. If, 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 like I said, everybody decides they're going to drive the speed limit and we don't have any violators, that's great, it still costs us nothing, it would be the vendor that, that takes that loss. It does generate, has the potential to generate revenue. However, I look at it as that revenue gets reinvested into your community, it's not going all over the place, it's reinvested in the community, and it's only for public safety initiatives. So we could fund things like extra signage or repainting sidewalks or, you know, whatever, there are all these different things that we could use that money for. So I don't want people to think that I'm going to go buy a new yacht and you're going to see me in the Bahamas, it's, that's not how it works. So the proven effectiveness, again, there's, studies have shown in this particular program, it's 80% violation reduction. So I actually have some numbers from this specific company, and they, they gave me permission to use it. So Hendry County's on board with this company, and just from February through March, they have a 26% decrease in issued citations. The City of Eustis was, I think was the first city on board in this program in the state of Florida. From September to November, they have a 50% decrease in issued citations. Leesburg, 60% decrease. Hialeah Gardens, almost 70% decrease. So I'm hoping if we implement this, that we run into the same, the same success that they're having. I'd love to see an 80% decrease in this. The goal is to go out of business in this. But just to be frank with you, it's just not efficient. One of the complaints we would get is, can you put an officer in a school zone? Sure, sometimes we can. Then you stick them there and a call comes out and they're gone. Or, okay, they get one cop, or one police officer gets one person, and then what happens to the other 10 that decides? Because we're all smart, right? You see them pulled over on the side of the road, and I can get by this guy because he can't get me, too. So that's the problems that we run into. And again, I think these camera programs, while it does sound a little bit scary and people are going to say it's government overreach, well, what's the ultimate goal of it? It's to keep the kids safe, we try to get people to slow down because I just can't put a cop in these zones every single day. While I would love to, it's just not feasible. So the next steps for implementation, we kind of talked about, the site selection, the deployment of the cameras, and then you have the, your public education campaign, it's got to be a 30-day campaign, and then the It's got to be a 30-day campaign, and then the enforcement, you know, the enforcement starts. Again, we're hoping if this thing is implemented to go out of business where maybe this vendor decides you guys ain't for us, you know? We're just not making money, but, which would be okay with us because, again, we're just trying to change driver behavior because, you know, our children's safety couldn't be more important to us. And then, I don't know if that video will play. There's a video that I was going to show you guys.
So last year, 213 people died on our roads. What do you think would be a more acceptable number?
Um, acceptable? 70, maybe? Probably 70.
Can you say 70? Actually, this is what 70 people looks like. So now, what do you think would be a more acceptable number?
Zero.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, that's our goal, zero, right? We want zero traffic fatalities. That's the goal every single year. We continue to miss the mark, but if we can do something, anything, to maybe limit just one, to me, it's worth it. And that's why we're here in front of you tonight.
Thank you. You know, we talk about money grab, but the basic thing is the safety of our children. That's the whole purpose of putting it in there. You alluded to it in what you said about having an officer out there, and we get a priority call, and we have to leave, and we leave the zone unattended. So I think it's a great idea to have it in. Are there any, uh, member? Ooh, everybody's lighting up here. Member Muscoso.
Sure. Thank you so much for the presentation. Absolutely, I think the safety of children is the most important. My question is, my kids go to Park Avenue, and I have never seen someone walk or bike from that school. And I actually asked the school resource officer today, how many kids bike or walk? And the number is zero. So perhaps, I know that people often speed down that road, but in that particular location, we don't have any bikers or walkers. Now, my kids had also attended Imperial Estates, and if you're ever around that area, there are a lot of kids that are walking and biking, and so I can see that being very useful. So that would be something I would like to know, the data on how many kids are walking in those areas, that might be helpful as well. What I wouldn't want to do, for example, on Park Avenue, is put something up from 7:00 to 3:00 when there actually aren't any kids. I mean, obviously, we want people to slow down, but I want to make sure we're putting it in the proper places.
Member Stokel?
Yes. That was, one of my questions was, you gave us a folder with the different data on some of the school areas. Are we proposing that there will be cameras at all these spots? Is that the?
Yes, and some schools have multiple school zones. But there were a couple that, again, looking at the data, just didn't meet criteria for me. I thought, you know what? It's a road less traveled, so it wasn't worth it. I think Member Muscoso brings up a valid point, if there are no kids. But I do know that it's kind of, it gets a little strange over there when you get over by Apollo and, because the school zones kind of merge into each other. Because I remember thinking, right there at Knox McCrayan, what is that, Knox McCrayan Park? I probably wouldn't put a speed camera there because it's very confusing, and we don't want people to be confused. We want them to know exactly what they're coming into. You know what I mean?
Okay. And then, is it something that we could do and, like, pick certain schools and maybe exclude Park Avenue and then add it after the fact?
Oh, yeah.
See how it's going? Or, you know, there's a development that's happening right next to Park Avenue, so should that become more populated? We could add it after?
Yeah, there's no question. There's nothing saying we have to put them in the zones now. You know, I was talking to the chief one day, and I said, you know, here's the challenge. What if I don't put one in a school zone, and then a kid gets hit and killed there? How do I explain that to the family, right? They're going to say, you put them in all these other ones, but not this one. What if you would have had one in there? And that's what I struggle with.
Okay. So you're proposing all of them as it stands right now? That we're not excluding?
Just based on the data, though, so I'm not just indiscriminately saying, put it there.
Okay.
If the data supports heavy traffic in that area, because could it, we have kids run off campus all the time, all the time, and they call us, and we've got to chase them down, and the schools won't go hands-on with them, so they wait for us. Could that kid run across the street, get hit? Yeah, it could. And then, you know, how do I explain that to the family? Well, we could have put that there, but we decided against it. That's what I struggle with, and it's difficult.
Yeah. And I think to Vice Mayor Cole's point, one of the things that I wrote down was supplementing cops. Like, we just don't have the money or the resources to put a cop at every school zone area, which would be nice, but we don't have those resources. So in my mind, having it there for 30 minutes prior, 30 minutes after, it's the same thing as having a cop car there just to make sure people are abiding. I appreciate that there's no points going on the record. It's $100, which is enough to say, you know, maybe I shouldn't do this again, but not too much. My last question was, which I, maybe I missed it, it wasn't very clear. How was the vendor benefiting from this? Because it looks like they were not part of that ratio of, you know, we're getting 60%, the state's getting this. I was like, looking for the vendor, where, what's their benefit?
So different vendors, it really depends on the vendor. I will tell you this specific vendor that we're dealing with, that I like dealing with, it's called Ultimate. But, so they have two separate payment programs, if you will. They'll do what's called a revenue sharing, which is, you know, out of that $60, they would take like $20 from each citation out of your 60. Or you could do the $7,000 per school zone. So I think it's $3,500 per camera system, which sounds like a lot of money. But when we plug the data in, you try to forecast out, okay, what kind of problem do we have here? And we forecast it out. The program with the $7,000 flat fee, look, make the city look to, it look to be a better deal for the city, if that makes sense. But again, it will depend on the vendor, and we haven't decided on that. We would have to discuss that as a city.
Okay, because I did see that on there where it said, yes, you would have to fund it out of the city portion of it. So if we were, to your point, if we were able to, like, eliminate the issue, which would be our goal, would we just potentially stop the program then to avoid paying the $7,000 annual fee?
Yeah, so that's exactly right. So even if, let's say, our citations go to zero, we don't pay $7,000. They just take the loss. It costs us nothing forever. It doesn't, and there's no, there's no capital assets that we have to worry about. They take their equipment back.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Member Nelson?
I was going to ask the same question as Member Stokel, but I would say, I was shocked at the number of violations that were caught. I mean, this is Imperial Estates, all hours, 731 violations. And I was like, whoa. I'm like you, I didn't expect that.
And if you look, that's in a day, one day. So project that out 30 days or a year.
Yeah. Yeah. It's crazy.
And just to clarify, that's 10 miles, at least 10 miles over. They hit the, they were tracked as a violation?
Yeah, when they hit 11 over is when they start getting citations.
That is crazy.
Yeah. So, thank you.
Any other council questions? Harry Nunn, thank you so very much.
Thank you.
City Clerk, would you read the rules of, for speaking?
For the 5:30 meeting, correct? This is a city council meeting to hear special recognitions and presentations. Council will not take formal action on the agenda items. All individuals wishing to speak so, speak may do so under petitions or requests. No sign-up card is required. Citizens will be given three minutes to speak. All sign-up cards and exhibits being submitted to the city council shall be placed in the box on the table.
I just want to remind you that this is not our city council meeting. It will start after the end of this meeting. And this is special recognitions and presentation meeting. So I will open the floor for petitions and requests from the public.
Wanda, would you hand out the flowers, please? Okay, I'm giving you, on sustainability, I'm giving you a gardenia. And why would I be giving you a gardenia regarding sustainability? Well, for the past, I don't know, maybe 20, 30 years, I've been handing out gardenias on Mother's Day. Because it's a tradition, from where I'm from, is that a white flyer represents that your mother is up there. And a red flyer means that she's here still with us. But it looks like this year, because of climate change, I'm not going to have the gardenias because the bush is full right now. So that has to do with sustainability. I had a conversation with Lily about sustainability, and she has done a, she hasn't done a good job, she's done a fantastic job. However, I want to disagree with what was said here by, I'm not sure, maybe it was Stokel, is that she inherited what she had from the city. She didn't. She didn't. The 2019 Rosilian Study Plan had an addendum that showed massive problem with sustainability. It was an addendum. She didn't get that. They took it away. They took it away, and in fact, it was added because it was disciplinary action upon Mr. Parrish and Mr., well, and someone else, Galindo, for omitting that information. So what I'm saying to you is that I am opposed to what she has now, although she did a fantastic presentation, because she's getting propaganda and secrecy, and she's not getting the secrecy. Let me give you an example of what is not sustainable. When you have an iceberg, you look at an iceberg, and you have a little bit above the water, and you have a whole lot below the water. Well, the Geibn-Hersberg Principle is stated in the 1985 freshwater management study. It does not apply to the city of Titusville, although it is stated that it does. And that is similar to an iceberg. In this case, is that the water above the water table compared to the water below it is supposed to have a 30, over 30 to 1 relationship. In other words, if you have two feet of water above the water table, expect to have at least 60 feet of fresh water. Well, that isn't true because it need, you need a confined, unconfined aquifer for it to work. We do not have an unconfined aquifer in the city of Titusville. So I'm telling you, this is a big deal that the city has spent millions on inappropriately for no purpose at all. And your area of critical concern is a bunch of nonsense. Your, what is on your map, Eric, is just nonsense and void. So I'm asking you to look into that.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Please look into that. Thank you. And for Lily, too. Thank you, Lily.
Anyone else for petitions and requests? Please state your name and your address.
My name is Trenton Mansfield, 1585 Pennax Avenue. I just want to speak on the presentation that the police department just made. I'm not necessarily for it. I wasn't for red light cameras either. I got, you got a question, I don't know if you're going to answer it or not, but you said over 14 miles an hour was going to be three points. Was that correct? Over 14 miles an hour was going to be three points?
Yeah, three, I think so. Maybe even more to four.
More, four points? So my question is, is when I get pulled over by a police officer, they ID me as I am Trenton Mansfield. They're not IDing the driver of that vehicle. So I guess the question is, is why are we giving people points if there's no actual proof? That's just a question I have.
There's no points with the camera?
No, there's points over 14 miles an hour.
Not with the camera?
Oh, that was for the site. I thought we were talking about that. So, okay, my bad. So, but I'm against, I mean, I'm not necessarily for it. I don't think it's, like, I'm in the boat of citation or taxation through that. I mean, I get it, we're for the safety of the kids, but, and then having it on all day long is kind of absurd to me. Sorry, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you. I, I'm sorry, I thought I misread that. I'm sorry about that.
Anyone else for petitions and requests? Harry Nunn, we're going to take a...
Vice Mayor Cole, we had two individuals give me cards, but there's no agenda item marked on it. I don't know if they're wishing to speak at this meeting or the next meeting. It's Ms. Fleming and Ms. Crowley.
Next meeting?
Okay.
Okay. We're going to take a five-minute break, and then we'll start the city council meeting. This meeting is adjourned.